Okay, then we'll move on. Uh, next, we're going to swear in anyone who wants to speak tonight. So anybody who thinks that they're going to be speaking, if you wouldn't mind, uh, raising your hand and uh, declare that any testimony that you give in this will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And please state verbally, yes.
Yes, yes, I do.
Very good, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. And the first one is public hearing variance number two, four, oh, oh, two. Hicks, A B by John Hicks, uh, of fifty-seven, seventy-seven Joy Road. Uh, tax parcel H, oh, eight, oh, four, one, oh, oh, no. Uh, to allow a land division of a parcel with a lot width of eighty-seven feet rather than the two-hundred-foot lot width requirement pursuant to section three, six, dash, one, seven, five, schedule of regulations. Uh, additionally, they, it's seeking a depth-to-width ratio greater than four to one. Uh, it's supposed to be fifteen to one, as required by sections thirty-six, dash, seventy-two lot ratio. Uh, who is going to be?
I can interrupt?
Oh, yeah.
We should probably let the applicants know that, given that there are only three members of the Z V A present, why that is quorum, by law, a majority of the members of the Z V A must approve a variance. That means all three of us have to approve for the variance to go forward and.
Yes, and if anyone here is uncomfortable with that and wants to have the full board, you are entitled to ask us to just set it aside and come back at the next meeting.
Uh, okay, so is that to say? Uh, this is like a one-shot deal?
Well, I guess it is in a sense that you need all three of us, um.
I mean, if you, uh, so reject the, the request, that's, that's the story, we can't come back at a future time?
Correct. Um, there, I mean, there are provisions for an appeal, as there would be in any situation, but, um.
And, and are the township's planning consultants also present online? Stumble on.
Yes, Doug, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
He is, he can speak now, okay, can we see, see him? I'm hoping with Chris, oh, okay.
Good evening, Doug.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, now we can see.
Okay, can I, can I make a little clarification on that last statement? Um, so I talked to, I knew there was only going to be, uh, three, uh, people here, three Z B A members here today. And I talked to Mariah Fink about this issue. And, um, she confirmed that if it's, so you, you, you're totally right, it has to be three members to approve. But if it would somehow turn out to be, um, you know, two to one against or one to two for, you know, whatever the combination would happen to be, um, uh, Mariah indicated that there could be a second motion to table. So it, it could, it could go on to the next meeting if, if, all that means if there's not three members is that the, is that the motion's dead? In that you, you could then make another motion to table to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and we, I, I think everybody here would be happy to do that, or come to that situation.
Okay, based on that statement, I feel like it's worth going forward. Um, and if, you know, if it's, uh, not approved unanimously, then we could, uh, could table it.
Very good, okay, well then, why don't you, uh, come forward and review with us what, uh,
Okay.
what you're looking for, we, we were here at the last meeting, but.
Barry with me. Um, so my name's John Hicks and I am trustee of my parents', my mother's, uh, estate and her farm, uh, of a hundred and plus acres. Um, and we are in the process of negotiating a, um, a conservation easement with Scioto Township for the, for the hundred acres minus, um, some exempt, exemptions, um, the, we'd like to exempt the, her house and a small amount of land around the house, um, to be able to sell that to to somebody and, uh, and then try to maximize the amount of land that we can, uh, put into a conservation easement. So that's, the reason I'm here is that, um, you know, the house is fairly far back from Joy Road. And, uh, so the lot would, that's why the lot is, proposed lot is, is narrow and deep. Um, but it would be surrounded by conservation land. Um, so the thinking is it would not impact, you know, any neighbors or, um, and pretty much leave, leave the land as it is, kind of status quo as far as development.
Okay, and for, for the record, uh, oh, and are you, could you state your name for the record?
Yeah, so I'm Barry Lonic, L O N I K, and I am the Township's Land Preservation Program Consultant. And have been since the village was first approved by voters, uh, nearly twenty years ago. And we've been working with the Hicks family for quite some time, um, and, uh, we are seeking to per, to purchase a conservation easement on something around a hundred acres out of the hundred and ten that the family owns. And for that, we have, uh, federal grand award, state grand award, we've got some initial commitments from the Ann Arbor Green Belt Program and Washington County Natural Area Preservation Program, as well as the Township's Village. So we basically got all the funding lined up to purchase the easement on the property, pending this consideration and then, uh, any others that the family wants to, to pursue. Uh, but we're looking at about a hundred acres, um, of conserved land, uh, and this is the, the southwest corner of Zeeve and Joy, right up the road here. Um, and across the road in Webster Township, there's about a thousand acres of contiguous conserved lands, we'd be adding on to that block. It's near our Van Cartler Preserve, just down the road on Joy, so it's in a nice conservation area. Um, and so we're fully prepared to move ahead with the easement purchase, once we define what the easement purchase area is gonna be, right?
Do any of the, uh, members have any questions?
Uh, Barry, I'm just curious in terms of, uh, what that conservation property would be used for?
Uh, a good bit of it's in agriculture now, um, there's some idle land and there's some woods. And the conservation easement will permit the woodlot to be managed, but not clear cut. Um, it will permit agricultural use of the property. And then the parts that are just open space, they can choose to do what they want to. But the working idea is that no other houses would be allowed on that more or less hundred acres of property. There may be allowance for some agricultural buildings, but no residences on it.
Uh, second question is, if you are to meet the current, uh, requirements, how much would that, uh, hundred acres be reduced?
Yeah, so to meet the, the shape and the frontage, the frontage would, would be met if the shape requirement was met. Um, I estimate about ten acres, because it's, uh, you know, it's like third, the, the depth of the lot would have to be about thirteen hundred and fifty feet or so, whatever, you know, drawing sketch shows. And so a fourth of that is like three hundred and thirty foot width, so the width times the depth is ten acres.
All right.
And, and the proposed lot would be about four, as we understand, and we will get a survey, um, of the property when we're doing the conservation easement. That'll include, if this is approved, that the, the excluded area as well. So it's kind of more or less six acres that's, um, uh, in flux here, that we'd like to conserve rather than have it, you know, add it on to a ten acre, and become a ten acre parcel.
Any questions? Um, and did anyone here visit the property, and if so, did anyone talk to anyone out there?
I've ridden by it a few times, it passed.
Okay, any conversations with anyone out there? No, how about you, Mr. Walsh?
I was out there, assuming this was going forward in April and looked at the property, but I did not speak with the applicant or anyone else regarding it.
Right, and I, I drove by it, but did not speak with anybody. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
Close.
Okay, I would just, uh, note for the record that, um, uh, you, you've told us that if you were to meet the requirements, uh, that acreage, uh, that would be not part of the easement would be ten acres. And that, uh, what you're proposing is a four acre parcel, is that right?
Yeah, approximately four, and that's, you know, could be four, it could be four and a half, you know, it's, uh, it's not surveyed yet and, uh.
Okay, um, if there's no other discussion, um, we can close the hearing, we need a motion for that.
It's you or me.
Close the meeting, my support.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
I think technically we have to roll call pretty much.
Oh, okay, uh, Kangas?
Yes.
Walsh, yes, Remy, yes. Thank you. Okay, does anyone have a motion to make here?
Talk amongst ourselves. I'm in support as long as the conservation goes through. That, that would be my only conditional thing, not supporting this.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree, I, I think that, um, the, uh, the frontage requirement, that frontage is gonna be left vacant, uh, no matter what, whether it's in the easement or not in the easement. And obviously, you're trying to maximize the conservation easement, um, area, and I think we're all in, in support of that, so.
Have a similar lot size.
Okay, then does anybody wanna make a motion?
Can you make a motion?
So regarding variance number two, four, zero, zero, two, Hicks comma A B by John Hicks, five, seven, 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 Joy Road, H dash, zero, eight, dash, zero, four, dash, one, zero, zero, dash, zero, one, zero. To allow a land division of a parcel with a lot width of eighty-seven feet rather than the two-hundred-foot lot width requirement pursuant to section thirty-six, dash, one, seven, five, schedule of regulations. Additionally, the depth-to-width ratio greater than four to one, fifteen to one was proposed, as required section thirty-six, dash, seven, two, lot ratio. Findings of fact for this, that a parcel of a hundred plus acres still left at Scioto is actually unusual. The home is approximately a hundred and twenty feet from Joy Road, which even in the matter is also unusual. The request is part of an agricultural conservancy, aiming to preserve as much of the land as possible. And the home itself was built approximately in nineteen seventy-six. Given this, there are exceptional circumstances, as noted in the finding of facts, that do not apply generally to other properties or class of uses in the same district. But such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same zone or vicinity, given that the distance of the house from Joy Road is unique. But the granting of such a variance or modification will not be material detrimental to the public welfare or materially injurious to the property or improvements in such zone or district in which the property is located. The state of this will have no impact on neighbors. Or that the granting of such variance will not adversely affect the purpose or objectives of the master plan of Scioto Township. And fifth, the circumstances or conditions upon which this variance is faced do not result from the actions of the applicant or his or her predecessors entitled. If the house was built free of our ordinance, this. Given that, uh, my recommendation is to approve this variance, with the condition that the conservatory must go through.
The conservation easement?
Conservation, yes. That would be my motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor? Um, uh, this, yeah, a roll call, um, Kangas?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Remy, yes. Motion passage, um, we have a, a form, uh, an approval form that we can give you today. Good luck.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Sorry for the delay of last ones.
It's okay, I understand.
Okay, yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is, uh, variance number two, four, oh, oh, three, Barbara Yoder, one, six, 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 Abigail Way. Tax parcel H, oh, eight, three, six, four, three, five, one, oh, one, to allow installation of a generator with a side yard setback of three feet instead of the required five-foot minimum side yard setback. And thirteen feet from the rear yard instead of the required twenty-five-foot setback from the approved P U D setbacks in the ravines. Is anyone here to talk to us about that?
Having a little difficulty hearing.
Okay, um, state your name for the record, please.
I beg your pardon?
What, your, please state your name for the record.
Barbara Yoder.
And, uh, you're the petitioner?
Yes.
Did you, um, so tell us, tell us what you're looking for and, and why?
Uh, I have, uh, desired to install a whole-house generator. Uh, I currently have a portable one and, uh, have used it, but am unable to maneuver it anymore. I'm eighty, have some mobility issues and need the generator, uh, in the case of electricity blackout because of, uh, severe sleep apnea and asthma, you know, for the air conditioning and the electricity. Um, I, I, the generator wouldn't be anymore, what do I wanna say? Uh, of a difficulty for neighbors, because I already use a gas one. But my family has moved away, so I don't have anybody to, you know, put it up. So, uh, consequently, in case of an emergency, uh, I just thought it was wisdom to get a whole-house generator. And the generator is in the back against the woods and is actually probably, I don't know whether the issue is air or, uh, but the space would certainly be more open than where the current portable gas generation, gas generator goes in case of an electrical out, uh, outage. So I'm just asking for mercy.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Included in our packet was approval from your homeowner, homeowners association.
Yes.
I assume there are no objections from anyone else?
Correct, there were no objections.
I believe there was also some, uh, something in the record about the location of your house already being close to the property line when you bought it, because, wasn't that?
Yes, that was part of the Carlisle Ward. Existing home is not conforming on woodside by only being three feet, two inches, which doesn't meet the ravine's P U D setback requirements.
But that house was constructed when you bought the property, correct?
I beg your pardon?
The house had already been constructed when you bought the property?
Uh, no, uh, I bought the property and then the house was constructed afterwards. I've been there twenty-five years.
Anyone else have any questions?
Do you currently, with your, um, Honda, how much of your house is run by the Honda?
Uh, the refrigerator, the stuff in the kitchen, and, uh, the light, uh, let me see, the bedroom. But not, not the, uh, air conditioning unit, et cetera, and it's the air conditioning unit that's critical.
I have a similar situation. Uh, I have a, uh, portable, um, generator. And, uh, I looked at the cost of putting a gen rack in, and, uh, I don't think I have any of the, uh, variance issues that you have, but, um, found it to be pretty expensive, I assume you've looked at the costs?
Yes. Yeah, I've had everything done except, uh, uh, you know, I had to get a variance, it's ready to be installed. Uh, I just have to get, uh, approval from you all.
So you have all the electrical boards all set up, ready?
Uh, well, they're, no, that's what, they're not gonna do all that, but I've gotten a new gas meter in and all that. All the preparation ready for the installation.
Any other questions from anyone on the board? Okay, um, anyone wishing to speak or comment on this? I'm, I'm assuming that if somebody, you see raised hands, okay. Well, then can we have a motion to close the public comment? Oh, yeah, um.
I visited the site yesterday, I did not speak with the applicant, but I walked around the house and noted the wooded lot right behind and the narrowness of, um, distance between houses.
Right, and I also, uh, uh, drove by and sort of peeked around the corner and, and observed the woods in the back. Didn't speak to anybody.
I didn't, oh.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, my one, my one question about that was the generator now sits between the two houses. So this one will actually be less obtrusive than the, uh, than the gas generator that has to be put in place.
Okay. Should we have a motion to close the public comment section?
Second.
Well, yes, we got a new roll call.
Yeah, Kangas?
Yes.
Remy, yes. Any discussion here? That's okay. Mr. Kangas, what, uh, do you have anything you wanna say about this?
No, I guess I understand the situation very well and, uh, similar, uh, health things and, um, like I said, I have looked at putting in a gen rack and, uh, turns out to be pretty costly, so haven't done so. And I got grandkids close by, so understand her, her situation though.
And Mr. Walsh?
If I remember correctly, we had a discussion probably back in twenty nineteen, so I think it was pre-COVID, where someone came in looking to put a whole-house generator. The issue, as I remember, was a setback, but the concrete pad was already there during that discussion. Not that the previous is binding, but during that discussion, we were talking that whole-house generators really were fairly common in the township. And that that was one of those things we were probably going to see more of in the future and, I think, treat leniently. Uh, so I, I understand the need for this and given the house, the shape of the lot, the constraints on it, I just don't see any other spot for this.
Yes, I, I agree, and I, I think that, um, the ability to have a house generator is a, is an important property right, which is granted to others, uh, in the community at various times and, uh, it seems like a reasonable request. So you wanna make a motion?
You're good at it.
Yes, it's either you or nature, yes. All right, let's read that. Regarding variance two, four, zero, zero, three, Barbara Yoder, one, six, 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 Abigail Way, lot H dash, zero, eight, dash, three, six, dash, four, three, five, dash, one, zero, one, to allow installation of a generator with the side yard setback of three feet instead of the required five-foot minimum side yard setback and thirteen feet from the rear yard instead of the required twenty-five-foot setback from the approved P U D setbacks of the ravine. Findings of fact, the request by the applicant was approved by the Root D's homeowners association. The applicant's location is bordered in the rear by open wooded space. Also worth noting that the ravine's P U D has unique setbacks. And the existing house currently has a nine conforming side setback. Given that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property that do not apply generally to other properties or class abuses in the same space. Getting the findings of fact on the property, uh, the P U D setbacks in the woods. But such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same zone and vicinity. And whole-house generators are common in township and in your, uh, district. The granting of such a variance or modification will not be materially detrimental to public welfare or materially injurious to the property or improvements in such zone or district in which the property is located. Homeowners Association approval indicates that it's not. But the granting of such variance will not adversely affect the purpose or objectives of the master plan of Scioto Township. And absent exceptional circumstances, which could otherwise result in substantial injustices, the circumstances or conditions upon which the variance is based do not result, uh, from the actions of the applicant or her predecessors entitled. This is based on the ravine's, uh, P U D and how the house was constructed. Given that, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Second. Okay, uh, take a roll call, um, Kangas?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Remy, yes. Okay. The motion is granted, or the, uh, variance is granted without conditions.
The light won't, not clear down here, so she can hear.
Got a copy of that. So if you wanna take this with you?
Okay, thank you, this is all I need now, um.
We'll let the township know and they'll know tomorrow.
Yeah.
So yes, you should be good.
Okay, so I can proceed with, okay, and thank you so much.
Yeah, goodbye. I gave you a copy of that. I'll, I'll read that.
Just over.
That's X. Oh, I'm sorry, good. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay.
Probably repeats since I think the next applicant entered after our initial discussion on the number of members.
Yeah, I already see it.
All right.
I'm familiar with CBAs. We have, we have three members rather than maybe five.
Yes, and so we wanna make sure that you're
Yeah, so if I want to table it, I could do that, but I, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna wing it.
Okay, uh, we, we've also, we've also, um, uh, expected that if we're not unanimous here, uh, we can table the item until the next meeting when there's more members here, so see if we can go ahead. Then, um, calling, uh, the variance number two four oh oh four, Asif Zafar and Showni Vanta Kaswaran. Is that, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Uh, six eighty-five South East Road. Tax parcel H zero eight two seven three zero 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 one one to allow construction of an accessory structure with a side yard thirteen foot setback instead of the required thirty foot side yard setback pursuant to section three six dash seven five scheduled regulations. Have you both, uh, both signed in?
And Bob raised him.
Okay, and, uh, have, have you been sworn in? Were you here when we swore in at the?
I was at.
Okay.
I was.
Please raise your hand and you swear affirm that any testimony you give here today will be the truth, the ultimate, not the truth.
One hundred percent.
Okay, please proceed and let us know what you're looking for.
So, um, mother-in-law is going to come live with, um, the homeowners. We've turned the garage itself.
Could I, could I, I'm sorry, could I interrupt you for a minute?
Robert Clark, Robert.
I wanna make sure I have your, your names for the record.
Yeah, fine, I'm Robert Clark. I'm, I'm the owner of Four Seasons Sunroom in Zandvoort.
Okay, Robert Clark?
Yes, yeah. No, he ain't Clark.
Okay, and, and you're Mr. Zafar, escort, okay. Thank you, go ahead. I'm sorry to
So we're, we're converting the existing garage into a bath and bedroom and a very small mudroom so they don't have to enter through mom's area into the home. Um, this decreases the, the usage of that garage considerably. So really, the outbuilding that we're talking about is going to be, be another garage. Um, and our intention, we, I understand side yard setbacks and not encroaching on the neighbor that's really close and, you know, you don't wanna muck up things, okay? But in this case, the, the land to the north is polo fields and it is, I've got pictures for you today. Um, is fully wooded and mostly wetlands and it, it cannot ever be built on. So it's not like we're gonna give, you know, another house built there that's gonna now see this, this, this facility. What we're trying to do is keep it in line with the house. It's a pretty nice house, so, not pretty nice, it's a very nice house. So to, to say, oh, you got three point two acres, you know, put it over way in the back. Well, you know, now you gotta put it in the driveway and get all that back there. He's got septic field back there. There's just things that stop us from being able to move it. Putting it in the front of the house, I think would be hideous. I think it'd be an eyesore, to be quite frank. So what we try to do is we try to place it where it's gonna conform with the house. We're still gonna keep it a certain distance away from the house. I think we have it for four feet away from the house. Yeah. Maybe five, um, so, but it'll be in line with the back of the house so that when you're pulling up the driveway, it's gonna look like it has purpose. It's gonna have a garage door, it's gonna have a service door. Um, at this point, he's gonna go in with the gravel base and in the future, you can always turn it to concrete, okay? It's, it is a over glorified polearm, okay? And I have a polearm in my house, but, um, but this is gonna give him the usage to park his, his, uh, zero-turn tractor and, and the things that are kind of needed, not left outside. So siding to match the house, garage door, service door, window will be put in, so, you know, if you look at it from the back of his home, looking north, yes, you're gonna see it going beyond the house itself, but the front is gonna be very, uh, kinda conformed with the garage that's existing so that it doesn't again look like it's, why should put that there? Um, and again, if we were encroaching on other neighbors and we were, didn't have the polo fields to the, to that side, then yeah, I would, I would have had a little more of a, uh, problem coming to you to ask for this variance. It won't hinder other neighbors. We're not going to change things. It is going to make it, um, against, uh, public safety and public, you know, beauty, actually. So just wanna keep it, keep it nice and make it as somebody else would want it. If it was your home, you, you wouldn't want me putting it on the front of the house. I mean, it would look rather, from Z Road, it would look funny. So that's our, that's what we're looking to do is just try to expand some space so you can have storage along with allowing mom to move in and have her bedroom bath.
And did you say you have some pictures for us?
I do. I, I took them to, today. I'm gonna bring it up for you guys. It's a lot easier to see. I printed them, but they turned up there, so.
If we, if we could have the printed pictures for the record?
Sure, absolutely. They're right here. I could even email them to, um, I can't think of a young lady that'd deal with that front of the lot, but here's the printed pictures of the users.
Not that there are two pictures of, uh, so the end of the driveway as well as the side. So these will be exhibits one and two.
So this is the shot from the driveway, you know, Z Rose back here. And this is the end of the driveway, but we're gonna take it right from the end of the driveway back just so that he'll, he'll be able to pull in to this area with the equipment and so on. I'll, I'll bring this to you.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I will, I will leave you.
A little bit not too moldy these days, so.
Uh, and this is showing the view towards Polo. I mean, you can see it's a wooded area. It's not gonna be an eyesore to anyone. Um, the back of the building, everyone knows there. And there's a, that's, that's another photo. These landscaped nicely over there. You know, it's just, uh, it's gonna be a, yes, it's gonna be an outbuild. Couldn't go anywhere else on the lot.
Yeah.
I mean, that's simply silly for me to say no, absolutely not. It's three point two acres, but we're just trying to put it in a position that makes sense. We feel this is where it makes sense. I think a little bit.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have signatures on my phone.
So that's where we'll place it right here, okay? And that's the beautiful, it's just literally wetlands. So.
All right, and this bit to here, what's the word with that garage?
Um, so here's Z Road.
Yep.
His garage is right here on, on the, on, in his, in his building.
Yep.
And then that, this is gonna go from the edge of the garage that's there back this way. And his septic fields and everything back there.
Okay, what's here?
That's front, that's
Oh.
Yes, that's all.
Okay, all right.
I have a survey. You wanna see a survey? You're right, okay, I mean, I had a mark of that. There's, there's the home right here. This is it on the property. This is the existing garage right here. It's a southern bedroom.
Yeah.
So family, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So does anybody on the board have any questions?
I saw a comment somewhere in there that said it could be placed somewhere else. I, I haven't been able to figure that out.
It's right here, yes, I've got the, the, uh, the, uh, variance analysis, yep. Uh, so it says, it starts out with, you know, I don't wanna say negative, but the, the thoughts of why can't you put it someplace else? Um, on the property possessed, uh, by the property, the same zone and vicinity. And then it starts to talk about that granting it, what it, what would do detrimental to the public welfare, uh, or material injurious to the property improvements to the zone or district of which the property is located. So it, it, that kind of, uh, why aren't you putting it someplace else to reasons that, you know, it's, it's, it's facing polo fields. It's not facing a neighbor and it did give some positive points to it. At least that's what I read.
You mentioned the septic field.
Yeah, that's in the back.
Is there anything documenting where it is? I, I guess the reason I'm asking is I understand the no harm, no foul, we should do it. If you've looked at any of previous minutes for people requesting setbacks, we've had people come in and said, yeah, we've got setback is a common area, not gonna bother anyone. Setback is a setback.
Yeah, that doesn't mean like, I got
As a group have been pretty consistent on that.
Okay.
But when there are things that get in the way like trees, septic fields, when I, and again, I visited the house, we'll get to that shortly. I mean, you do have a little slope. I don't think that's gonna make that much of
No, we're gonna build it up. Yeah, we're gonna build it up.
I need a reason to say yes, other than no harm, no foul.
Yeah.
So I, I, I would need to see where the septic field is to see if that's in the way or not. Anything that supports why this is not just convenient and appropriate for the applicant.
Sure.
But it is the spot.
Right.
And at the moment, I'm not getting that.
Okay. Um, do you know exactly where your field's at?
Um, I couldn't describe it in terms of the, uh, the dimensions, but if I was to, yeah, I mean, if we were to defend the lot, I can
I have a survey right now.
Yeah, on the survey, I can, um, fairly reasonable description.
Rephrase that by saying, I think we need something on the record to show.
Yeah, I understand. So what I could do is I can draw it and bring it back so that you have exact location?
Yeah, uh, just
If you can
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Even an approximate location, if you could draw it on there, we can attach that to the record.
I will definitely add that point. That is not an unfair request. Cause I know if we push it back, it's gonna get very close to the field.
And it's, uh, yeah, so when the Septic Camp Tank Company, uh, came out, uh, uh, it was a few months ago and they kind of dug in their shovel to kinda feel where the septic field is and where the septic tanks are, so they described, and I was fairly surprised how big it is that takes a good chunk of the backyard because we've always thought about, you know, what can we do? You know, in terms of planting trees or having some sort of a, you know, uh, you know, maybe raise some chickens or something, you know, put a little bit of a coop or something. So the gentleman said that you have to be very careful with good chunk of your backyard because when, uh, the problem does arise and the crew needs to work in that area, you don't want anything obstructing, you don't want any trees going in there, you don't want any structures going in there. So, um,
Do you remember where though? So this is where the center is.
Right.
That's your garage. You know, how far back?
So, so this is the property, right?
Yes, sir.
So in here, um, be- between the end of my deck in the back.
Yeah.
Back of the property.
Yeah.
I would say about, uh, halfway down in the backyard is where the septic field starts.
Okay, and where's your tanks? So your tanks gotta be
The tanks are at the, uh, at this corner, right there, uh, at the very, uh, the south side of the deck.
Okay.
Right next to the deck.
I can draw it for you and get you pretty accurate.
I've got a copy of the mortgage survey that you had, uh, with the package. If you wanna draw it on there.
Sure.
Yeah. Give that to us.
Sure, I can do that. I didn't thank you for seeing us today, but thank you.
Some idea where the tanks and
Sure.
To go.
And I think it may also be important to identify a few of the tall, mature trees that exist also, uh, which kind of get in the way when you get too close, um, so.
Should I safely say tanks are right here?
Yes.
Field is over this way.
Yeah, the field is the back half of that property, beyond the tanks. There's, uh, fairly mature trees, right there. Yeah, there's actually three tree, uh, three trees right next to each other, all pine.
We know this one.
Yeah. Yeah, the trees actually get closer, get closer than what, what I identified here. So it's, so that kind of goes around like that.
Yeah, that's okay.
This'll give you an idea. Anger over there on this side of the house.
Sure.
Yep. Okay, push it back. And our house. Yeah. I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. So by quick thing, I know I'm gonna get an illustration. Just look at the one photo. And, yeah, well, you can see on the right end. It's my turn, right? Field will be better.
Yes. Okay, so we're noting for the record exhibit three.
Right. The Dr. Martha Ford survey document, correct, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, square footage of the garage.
Or it's a typical twenty by twenty-two, so four hundred and forty feet. Oh, is it? Four hundred and forty square feet, yeah.
So he'll be putting more than a tractor in there.
Yeah, I mean, he's got equipment, he's got equipment, he's got bikes, he's got, uh, everything a garage holds. And it, and you can't really put it in. We have to take it out of there because of the veteran. So all that stuff needs to go out. Right now, if you, if we went there, you'll see storage bins on the inside of the driveway.
So that's right. I had to, uh, rent a few U-Haul boxes, uh, uh, that portable kind, so all the stuff that was in the garage has come out and I put it in the storage, uh, until the garage gets done. And so when the garage is done, it'll only have space just to park two cars. It won't have any space for any additional
No space.
The kids, kids bicycles and miscellaneous lawn equipment, so, uh, that was one of the big reasons to build that structure, so, um, all that stuff. And because it's a three acre property, uh, you know, I had to get a decent size, uh, uh, right, right on more, so that's going to be housed in there, so um, came in as a necessity. And the other thing that, uh, uh, it, it's just personal for me is not knowing that this would, um, require, uh, a, uh, variance, variance, thank you, um, uh, not knowing, I actually went ahead and made the purchase. uh, not knowing, I actually went ahead and made the purchase of the of the kid and so that they are, they're waiting to deliver it, but I purchased it. And so I'm really hoping, keeping my fingers crossed that uh you know, don't, you know, end up uh you know, running into an issue with that, so.
Any other questions?
Having been on planning permission three years back, the structure itself is not very viewable. It might be uh kinda ugly, actually, and I'm surprised that uh we don't have a rendering of a building that's a lot more.
I do have it. I do have a rendering. Um, I bought the structure from Menards and they have an application where you can design it and you can put in the windows, put in the matching siding, the matching roof, matching everything. And there's a three D rendering of it, which we can't provide. Yeah, we should have submitted, uh, uh, sorry about that, but we do have it readily available that we can submit uh on a short notice.
This does go back to my issues.
Yeah.
See you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the?
Close public hearing.
Okay.
For.
Angus. Go ahead, vote for uh closing the public hearing.
Yes. Walsh, yes.
Lenny, yes. Hey, any board discussion?
Well, I should be fully close to public hearing. I did go out to the applicant's uh property yesterday. I'm guessing I spoke with Shalini, like it's a store on.
I didn't know I was here today.
Yeah, she knows, but I said, oh, wait, I didn't know somebody came by.
We did, we did not. She just asked if there was anything she could do to help if I was there. And I said, I was just there to take a few pictures, so I had something to refer to uh when thinking about this variance.
Did you get a chance to look at the inside of the garage, what's going on in it? Okay, that's okay. It's consumed.
Uh, I I understand. I saw the storage boxes outside. But that doesn't actually ultimately apply to the variance.
I understand. No, that's not what I was talking about. Just talking about how we're consuming the.
Yeah.
The garage.
I understand that.
About, okay.
And Mr. Angus, did you visit the property? And I drove by and took a look at it, but I didn't get out. I didn't talk to anyone.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay, thank you. The public hearing is closed. Any board discussion?
I guess I'm leaning towards tableing this. I would like to see something more than a hand drawn.
Yeah, we can get the rendering and everything, yeah.
Yeah, just because the information that I've got at the moment leads to say no. And if that's the case, we're gonna table anyway. So I I guess I would make a, I'm leaning towards a motion to table it just so we can get additional information to make a more informed decision.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Well, that's.
Well, I'm sorry.
How viewable is it?
There is none.
No visibility.
No one will ever see it.
Um, all sides are heavily wooded, so there is no visibility. And then the one side that doesn't have woods is on the um opposite side of the, the south side of the property where uh you can't see the garage from there anyway.
Yeah, I'm I'm leaning the same way that that you are on that. I mean, I it it seems like a perfectly reasonable request, and I understand that, but I think we need something on the record that
Sure.
shows how significant and impractical we need to put anywhere else. So we have motion to table.
I will make motion to table for.
Okay, roll call.
Angus, yes. Walsh, yes.
Wait.
Maybe.
Yes.
One more. Okay. I wish it could superimposed next time.
Okay, the motion to table is passed. And that's it for
Thank you.
For tonight, so we will uh supplement that and.
Yeah, we're gonna try to superimpose it on, you know, next to the house type thing. And my girl at the office is pretty good at that, so try to get the three D and and make it more realistic.
Show the impediments to moving it somewhere else.
Sure.
That's what we need.
Oh, yeah, the septic field and the septic tanks will be shown very clearly, very clearly.
And the trees, yeah.
All right, and the clarity of the thing that you purchased.
Yeah, the three D, that's why I said we're gonna try to superimpose this
Yeah.
on a picture of the house and so that you get a real good idea of what we're doing.
We'll provide all the.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Time to.
Thank you very much.
So that's all for the public hearings. Um, is there any old business? Then let's move on to approval of the minutes of March twenty first, twenty twenty-four.
Catch anything?
Anybody have any changes to the?
We're seeing, although I can approve, so.
Actually, you can, huh? You are actually allowed to. We've, we've had that discussion already.
Oh, okay.
But on this, we don't have to be unanimous, I don't believe. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have to face that question today. Okay.
I I moved to accept the minutes as submitted.
Hang on, me too. Catch them. All right. Excuse me, just a second. Approval, I wanna do that right in the middle of the start zone. Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have, we don't have, uh, yeah, and I don't, I don't have a written. Okay.
Motion. No, very good, thanks.
Okay, I do. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, you are making a motion to approve the minutes.
As as. Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Angus, yes, Walsh, yes, Remy?
Yes. And do we have an information report and planning commission hands on? That's
That's me.
Be you?
That would be me, uh.
We met on Monday. It was a continuation of the discussion around a major change. Journal is PUD, the relocation of the Stabler Road and Park Road intersection. Uh, so it met the requirements of all the necess- necessary governing bodies, Walsh, I got the road commission, EGO. So it's a public hearing, but there's a public hearing in April that due to Passover, we ended the meeting without completing. So we continued the public hearing on Monday. Uh, then we had a motion to approve as submitted the proposal, so that'll go to the board. We also continued the discussion on developing the ordinances for solar power generation within Syo Township. We had a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday due to lack of items that was canceled and there's gonna be two full meetings in June. So that's the high level summary.
Okay. Thank you. Next is public comment. Uh, any citizens wishing to address the zoning board of appeals on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda? So anyone have? We do. Ross and, okay. Hey, anybody else? Any other public comment? That's it? Okay, then I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Could I bring up something that fails on the time in case I'm gonna make the next meeting? I think it would be wise to get at least a couple of these microphones down here. Because I know she didn't hear ninety percent.
Yeah.
Cause we all have fairly soft voices. I don't think it's echoed anymore.
Well, we'll see if that, if we, if that work.
I guess we need a couple of it's. Been behind her, so.
Or at least we should speak up. I mean, that's, you, that's a good reminder of that at least. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Some of the sport.
Roll call, please.
Angus, yes. Walsh, yes. Remy?
Yes.
Turning at eight oh four.
I needed to bring my umbrella.
That's a rating, you know?
Yeah.
Recording stopped.
Should I?
I will give these.